...of Manasseh Planning Commission meeting Thursday, March 3rd, 2022, 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Please take a roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Here.
Commissioner Samanski?
Here.
Commissioner Mimberto?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder? Chair Whitliff?
Here, thank you. Approval of agenda. This time the planning commission can't take action to approve the March 3rd, 2022 agenda. Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mick, second. Marlene, discussion?
I never got a copy.
No? You didn't?
You didn't get, do you need one? You think there's one in your packet?
There's some on the chair there.
Oh, there it is. Never mind. Who put it on the back? Okay.
So, discussion, side five. None? Please take a roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Okay.
Commissioner Samanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mimberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Conflicts of interest. Is there any member of the board that has any conflicts with the agenda tonight? None?
None.
You don't have to take a roll, do we? Approval of minutes. At this time, the planning commission can approve the February 3rd, 2022 meeting minutes. No motion?
No motion.
Motion by Bob, second.
Second.
Mick, discussion? None? Please take a roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mimberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Correspondence?
If there was any correspondence, it was sent to you. I don't recall any, and I don't have any tonight.
Okay, thank you. Public hearings, 314 Sieven Street, and the time is 7:03. So, we will open public hearing. So, the applicant, come to the podium.
Oh.
Go ahead and give us a rundown of your project, Steve.
Oh, you want me to give you the rundown? Okay. You guys know, I think I've met with you before regarding the building there, which some new revised plans show there's going to be 12 new units, 12 new rental units, that may be converted to condos later or something, but they're apartments. Two bedroom, two bath. There's two on the ground floor, so that's 14 total. And those are one bedroom, one bath with a loft. There's, we resolved the parking problem with indoor parking. Yeah. But we're going to use the big open space. We put a bunch of roll-up doors on the side, and we'll have indoor parking enough for, let's see, seven, I think it was 15, possible 18 cars to fit in, to fit inside. So, that's pretty nice.
Steve, can I interrupt you real quick?
I mean.
Do you have the full-size plans right there in front of you?
I do.
Do you mind putting them on the table so we can all take a peek at it?
Oh, sure. Yep. Thank you. Sorry, sir, I made a little copy. There's some errors in there, some editing errors. I had to add with my error to two, but I saw that, and I apologize. I think it's going to be a nice project. There's also, we allow for white box space, coffee shop on the corner of Fourth and Sieven, and also a tenant, another tenant space just to the north of that, off of Sieven. And there'll be 16 units total, but I was going to, I would like to own two of them on the one side. And, you know, everything will have separate meters. We're going to do it all up to code. We're going to utilize, try to utilize the north, east, and west walls as much as we can. There's an extension on the, on the west wall. We're going to go out to the farthest perimeter of, which is, the building will be 50 feet by 130. It's 130 now, and it's 50 feet warehouse area. But the little, there's a little skinny part in the front, in Sieven, the old building, the old original part, we're going to expand that. So, the green space now will only be, you know, that whole, the whole area where the, where they do parking, where they've been doing parking for 100 years or so, that'll be a little bit of a green space there now. We'll plant trees accordingly, and there's also going to be a green space on the roof. We're going to have a green roof.
Where was the, excuse me for interrupting, but the green space where now?
There'll be a green space on the south side, so it's along Fourth Street. And that, it's where the, it's all concrete kind of now, you know? That'll be, that'll be green space, sidewalk and green space as much as, I know that Jim McCullough said they were going to expand the road next year, so we'll work with that, you know? And whatever space we have, we'll make it nice. And there's also green space on the north side that'll give access, that's a 12-foot space that allows entry to the two ground units, and also for the meters, we want to get, try to hide all the, you know, utility stuff on the backside, on the north side, so. It'll, there'll be a little fence, probably a little fence and a gate along the, along the east side of the, of the green space there.
Where will the inside parking be accessed?
Pardon me?
Where, where is the access for the inside parking?
Oh, okay. That's on one of the plans here. There you go. You can see it on the, on the lower, can you see it on the, you can see it?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yep. And, and, you know, we, they, the architect drew in with three cars there, or four cars on the, right by the doors. We can probably squeeze more in. They, they didn't want to, but we can probably squeeze more in if we need to. And if you look at the, on the elevation, you can see, see the roll-up doors, how it's going to be.
It looks like awful tight fitting for the people that would have their cars in their first, the ones that, behind them to get out. How's that going to happen? You know, so?
There'll be, there'll be somebody there, a property manager, you know?
So, they're going to, the property manager's going to move these cars around so other people can get theirs in and out?
Yeah, there'll be, we'll work it out. Yeah, we'll definitely have it worked out, so we'll be able to get in and out.
Because realistically, it looks like nine, nine spots in these two, two areas?
Seven. Without blocking?
Eleven, I think. There's eleven in that.
In both areas, in both garages, I mean?
Oh, eleven and fourteen, fifteen, total.
You have two on the, on the left and seven more on the, on the right-hand side.
Yeah, you're sure.
So, people can move in and out freely.
Yeah, they should be able to move on, yeah.
Shoot her.
We'll definitely move it out, we'll work it out. Yeah, it'll, you know, we'll, we'll figure that out. But that's, you know, I didn't, we had a problem with street parking before, so I figured this would be a good way to accommodate it, and.
I don't like the sound of "we're going to work it out." I mean, you've come before us a bunch of times, and every time you've changed plans and stuff, and it makes me very nervous to hear you say, "We're going to work it out." You shouldn't have worked out now when you're coming here.
Well, the parking, they'll be able to get in and out, you know, with the front and the back car, we'll be able, we will. I mean, that's, whoever the tenants are, we'll, we'll have a schedule for that, you know?
So, you, when you mean a schedule, you'll only be able to park there a certain amount of hours, and then you?
No, no, no.
How do you plan on?
How? There's a, well, do we either have a parking valet, or we have, there'll be a key rack, and they'll be able to move the cars.
So, you want somebody else to move somebody else's car?
Possible. That's one way. Or, or we'll work it out with a schedule for the tenants. I'm open to suggestions on that, but I've been in these situations before, we did it in Chicago, and it, and it worked out fine. You work it out with the tenants, and who parks, you know? I don't think we're going to be using all the spaces, to be honest with you. I don't even think we'll be using all those spaces.
And just to remind you guys, because this is a planned unit development, it offers you that flexibility to reduce parking, required parking spaces if you, if you desire.
Okay.
And if I can, you know, I lived in Europe and in Asia, and this is very common, and again, the same thing, the last time I was in Chicago, my car was three cars in.
Yep.
In the, in the valley parking. So, it's not, it's not an impossible thing to work out, but I do like the idea of not necessarily making mandatory for people to double park if people want to park on the sidewalks, or if we do exempt perhaps.
And I would assume anybody that's coming into a possible lease agreement is going to understand this and be okay with it, and?
Yeah, yeah, we'll have it. If there's going to, you know, I figure the cars that are parked in the back, or way up front, or in the back wall will be the ones that'll be there for a lot longer term or something, you know? So.
Okay, please, please go.
Okay, well, I don't know what else to say, you know, the, the units are going to be real nice. We're going to try to, we also have an elevator, we're going to plan to put an elevator in, so we'll be able to cater to disabled and older people.
Will it be a freight elevator? Or, I'm thinking of moving in, moving out, moving?
It'll be, you use both ways. It'll be a big elevator.
So, it'll be large enough?
Yeah, it's not going to be a small one like this one, it'll be, it'll be bigger, yeah. And.
Steve, why don't you explain the green roof to us?
Pardon me?
The green roof? Can you give us more details on that?
Oh, the green roof? Okay, well, the, the green roof, I, the, it's, we expect to put planters up there. It'll be concrete, and the water will, will have planters. We may even have a cistern that collects water, you know, that, to use for watering, and that we'll be able to grow vegetables. We may have, we were thinking about putting a gas line up there, in case we want to do a little fire pit on the top. We have to check with the insurance and these kind of things. But these are all the, you know, it'll be a nice little, it'll be up there. I think we may even have river views from that, from that rooftop, from the corner there. I'm not sure. I don't know. I haven't, I haven't taken a drone up at that eye or anything, or, you know, I haven't done that, but it looks like it's possible.
I know the, the city likes regulations. Are people allowed to collect rainwater in a cistern?
I think that's a state regulation, is it not?
I, I honestly don't know.
I've not heard one in the city.
Well, just for garden use, I think it's okay. You know, to collect cistern water, it's, if it's, if it's, I don't know if we're going to, if it's necessary really at this point, you know, but we'll, we'll see. We're in the, this is basically the conceptual thing, and the architects have a lot of work to do. You know, you'll be seeing that the plans develop as they, as they go. I just, we were hoping that this, this gets approved, and then we can, then I can follow through with the financing and, and a lot more detailed prints. The basic design of it is not going to change, other than, you know, it's, it looks a little boxy right now. We'll have some lines on it, some Victorian lights, and I don't know what else to tell you at this point. It's, it's going to be a nice building. It's going to really, it's going to really add to the neighborhood.
The regulation, I know with residential, you can't bigfoot a lot, you have to have so much. What is it with a commercial piece of property?
Because this is a planned unit development, it allows that flexibility for them to expand it a little bit more.
Please talk to us about the, you know, the apartments, what you plan on doing. Are they furnished? Are they not furnished? You know, just go right through.
At this point, they were going to be unfurnished. There'll be a full kitchen, you know, the kitchen and everything, but with furniture at this point, no.
Stove, refrigerator, washer, dryer?
Oh, no, there'll be, no, all the, all the utilities and appliances will be in, yes. And it'll be, it'll be nice. I, I don't know, I don't know whether, we were talking about, I was talking about that with one of my guys today, about whether we'd have electric stoves, or, you know, I have to check with my insurance to see whether, a lot of times they want electric for the stoves inside for fire, as opposed to gas, a building like that. So, we'll probably have to go electric. There's some decks outside that we might be able to supply a gas line to, if they want to put a gas grill on the deck, which is, which is what makes it legal.
On the balconies?
Yes, on the balconies, right.
And you may check with Consumers Power. I believe they have some incentives for all electric, including cold weather heat pumps and utilities like that.
We plan on putting radiant heat in the floors, and we want to make this a pretty much energy-efficient building. If we can make it a, get a green certificate on it, we're going to try to. So, it's going to be a real, you know, real energy efficient, and the units will be pretty, you know, nine, 10-foot ceiling in the second and third floor, nine to 10-foot ceilings after we do the, and it's going to be tastefully done. I, I could, I don't know, I could show you some of my other work that I've done, you see.
I like the idea that you added the balconies. That helps break up the line of the building as well, so it's not just.
I think we're going to do some ins and outs, some vertical ins and outs on the building a little bit, you know? Yeah, and it'll help break up some of the lines, too. It looks a little boxy right now, but just wanted to kind of give you the idea of, we want to try to use the maximum space and provide housing for Manasseh and, and also some businesses there also, so.
I have a question for Zach. On the balconies, are, is that illegal use, or?
Especially when they're going into the right-of-way.
Over the right-of-way, you're asking?
Over the right-of-way.
Well, we're up at 18 feet, so there's quite a bit of clearance.
But it's still overhanging to right-of-way?
I understand. We talked, I mentioned that with Mike and Zach earlier, and I thought it was okay, just for about six feet. So, if we need a variance on that, I'd sure like to get it.
Because I know other municipalities have had issues with stuff hanging over right-of-ways.
Were you seeing it on that one?
Well, it's not on the survey. Like, it doesn't show. Typically, signs are a lot over it, but balconies, I couldn't respond to right-of-ways.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't show up on the, on the site plan here, it's on the rendering. So, that's, it's just something that just got missed to hunt that down beforehand.
Yeah, because the building itself is pretty close to the right-of-way line as it is to begin with.
Yeah.
Even about a two-inch balcony can be almost right on the property line itself, two, three inches.
We want to try to make this like one of the hub places in that neighborhood, and try to build for the neighborhood. It's going to be, it'll, it'll be, it'll encourage the neighborhood to also, you know, to better, better the yards and better the buildings and these kind of things. It'll probably be one of the, it'll be the nicest building in the neighborhood when we're done.
I would, I would agree on that.
Yeah.
So, what's your timeline? If you get your approvals today, what kind of a timeline are we looking?
I would imagine it'll, it'll take two years. You know, I, I don't think it'll take that long in construction, but we're now just from the, from the, from the go, with the pandemic and everything that's happened, we've, we've been delayed a little bit, and with the zoning and, and the planning approval. But if we get it approved, we're, we're going on fast track right now to get everything locked in, and I don't think the, I don't think the construction, the actual construction time is probably seven to nine months, so.
Do you have your funding already in place?
Pardon me?
Do you have your funding already in place?
We have a lot of it, we have a lot of it, yeah. It's just not, it's not finalized.
How much do you think it's going to cost for the entire project?
A million? Eight hundred, yeah, we're looking at eight hundred right now.
For this?
I'd like to guard.
It's tight, but I've done it, I, with me there, I think we can do it, so.
I like where you want the green roof. I've been to a lot of other buildings that have those, and it actually is pretty nice up there, if you, if they put it together right.
We've got a couple on River Street. They've done a nice job.
I've been to a bunch of them.
The steel, the problem is some of the steel is, the lead time on steel right now is nine months. And, you know, that's, that's, it stinks. Supplies, supplies are, if we could get everything, and if I have to wait, that's, you know, and I want to make sure it's good steel. It's US steel, so.
That building is so old, and the foundation has got to be really bad. How do you plan?
We're going to redo, we're redo, we're going to redo the, we're going to have to redo the foundation part of, yeah?
Have you done any soil engineering work in there to see if it's going to be able to withstand the weight of the building?
I have an, yeah, my engineer's already working on that, and, and we're going to have a, there'll probably be a footing, a footing plan that's going to go to, with a steel plant. I already have part, a partial steel plant, and I re, I submitted it, but I took it back out because it's going to be modified. Mike has, Mike and Zach have part of the steel plant, but for the foundation, they'll see a, a new plan for the, it'll be an added with the footing, the little deer, the concrete that has to go in, but.
Didn't you say there's a basement in that building, too?
There is a basement, yeah.
Is it a full basement, full height?
No, no, it's, it doesn't even go over the full, the full course of the original building.
What's the height on it?
Five foot.
Oh, okay.
Five, it's five and a half feet, maybe.
There's a basement, yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's not going to be used.
So, you're, just correct me if I'm wrong, you're basically destructing the demolition of the whole building to rebuild this?
No, no, we'll be able to squeeze, I think we'll be able to squeeze the steel in and be able to save some of the, some of the walls. There is one area, we've, since we've last met, since I've been in the last hearing, we've done some exploratory demo in the building, and there's some damage, some structural surgery that we have to do, you know, quite a bit, and it's, I know how to do it, it's just I wish a lot of other people did, and that means I'm going to be there a lot, and doing this with my engineers, and there's some termite damage on the one corner, pretty bad, pretty extensive structural. That has to be replaced on the, where they tied the warehouse into the old building, on the, on the, yeah, somebody that, it's old termite damage. I mean, it's, there's no termites in the building now, but, so we, you know, it was, we, I'm glad that we did that in order to see what we had, and, you know, and it exposed some, I'm sure Mike and, I'll bring Mike over there and take a look, Zach's going to be leaving unfortunately, but, you know. It's, it's, it's a challenge, it's a challenge, but it's nothing that I haven't done before, and I'm really looking forward to doing it, and I'm excited about doing this.
So, are you finding much, since this is an older building, I know most of the two-by-fours are going to be true two-by-fours.
But, yeah, then.
But then, are you finding a lot of where we've done any kind of repairs with more modern dimensioned lumber?
Uh, no.
Not even in the back?
Not, no, there were some partition walls that were put in, in the, those are gone.
Okay.
Those are gone, the partition walls. And some of the spans on the floors, you know, they're, they're not right. They're going to have to be redone, so the floors are going to have to be redone. This, they're spanning beyond, they're beyond the, what is structurally sound? Yeah, it's not sound. The span of the second floor, yeah, they're not strong, not strong enough.
Has there been a Brownfield study on this property?
Pardon me?
Brownfield?
No.
A Brownfield? Because this was a auto, auto repair store or shop?
We didn't find any source of oil or anything like that in that shop. You know, there was some, I know, I remember you mentioned that before, that it was that they worked on cars here, and we, we looked, I mean, you can take a look, we, it doesn't seem like it. I mean, we can, if we, if need be, we can do it environmentally, but I don't think it's, there's really no sign of it.
Mark, I'm on the Brownfield, nothing was brought back in.
There's been so much oil business there, per se, over the past 50, 60 years.
Yeah?
Furniture stripping was in that, excuse me.
There, there was a furniture, there was a furniture tank and these kind of things, but they had all the tanks, everything collected there. Everything was collected. They didn't just let it run out in the floor, run out in the waste, or, you know, around the yard. I mean, we, we looked around the back of the building, that green space, where the trees are growing, that would be, if, you know, a place where you would think that maybe somebody would dump because it's sight unseen. Everything's grown back there, and there's really no, no sign of it. I mean, I'd be happy to take anybody over there and take a look. It's, the tanks, we, we had somebody pick all that stuff up, they wanted it, and we saw no trace. I mean, it looked like they, they did a pretty nice job of collecting, and whatever they, whatever they used with other, whatever chemicals and stuff like this, they collected it and disposed of it somehow, but there was nothing there when we came in. The tanks were empty.
We don't know what has seeped through time into the ground and stuff, so they really should do some kind of bore sample.
Well, it's concrete floor.
But, I mean, on the grounds itself, and wherever there's dirt, you know?
Yeah, I guess.
Really do some kind of sample.
Oh.
Can we ask for a environmental?
I mean, I really don't, I really don't think it's necessary, but I mean, it's, it's.
What was that, Shelley, where'd you?
Is it required, or is there a recommendation for one?
I mean, I'd like to take Mike, and, what, can I take Mike over there and have him take a look and have him, and see what he, see what he judges?
No, environmental, you know, concrete is not completely non-porous, it's, no matter, the older stuff is still, it can be porous through it over time.
Yeah, I mean, you don't see anything on the floors, you really don't.
You know, that doesn't mean there's not.
I know, yeah.
If that's something you guys wanted to see, you could, you could table for that, if that's something you want, before you made a decision.
Or we can put it as a contingency or something, I get it done, I'm going to prove it. I'd be happy to do whatever, whatever you guys like. I don't think it's necessary, but I'll do it, I have no problem. Just, I think it's going to be just an extra expense, and it'll come up negative if anything's wrong, but, but that's just my, from, based on my experience doing this 48 years, you really don't see any oil. I wouldn't, I, well, take a look, I guess, that's all I can say. It's pretty clean inside.
What are you planning on using for the exterior of the building?
I'm sorry?
What are you planning on using for the exterior of the building?
Um, stone veneer on the base, you know, maybe some stone or brick on the base, and metal and other, other, the panels, it's more like a commercial panel kind of a thing, you know, kind of like, like the new Chamber of Commerce kind of, that look, you know, that modern, you know, not, we could, some people want clapboard, you know, they like the clapboard to keep it Victorian, but I'd rather not have, I'd like to do low maintenance and not have to paint. And we can, we can give you, we could give you a bunch of different ideas, and you guys, that could be another approval or something, if you guys, we were thinking about metal, you know, not, not pole barn kind of siding, but there's a bunch of different decorative metals, and, but I think on the, you know, probably up about so high, six feet high, or there'd be a wainscot kind of a brick, a brick veneer that comes in panels, it looks like it'll be brick. And I know the architects recommend going all the way up with brick, but I don't, I don't think that's necessary, you know, I don't, trying to break it up, break up the lines a little bit, not have it look too, too boxy and too, you know, make the design nice.
It's pretty boxy right now.
Pardon me?
It's pretty boxy right now.
Well, it looks like it, you know, it's, it'll, it'll look nice when, you'll see the lines. We have to get, I have to get, it's just a lot, you know, to do, to do the prints is a pretty, to do those designs and everything is a lot more, I just wanted to, I wanted I just wanted to, I wanted to see you guys hopefully get the approval, and we can go full tilt on this thing. If there's any contingencies, like the environmental or something like that, I'd be happy to, we'll be happy to do that, um.
I'm, I'm just hesitant to agree to something that looks like this right now. I'd like to see a little bit more detailed design on that. I know, I'm just.
I understand.
Things. But, uh, you know, once we give our approval, you know, it's our approval, I.
Well, I can come back, you know, I can do, you can do the approval, we'll come back for a design on the exterior before we do the exterior. Um, and you'll see the prints, you'll see, uh, more developed prints as they go. Mike will have them. I don't, uh, it's, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to have a, incorporate the Victorian along with a modern, with a modern style. And a low maintenance, very low maintenance, energy efficient.
Page two, um, section C in your narrative, um, says to utilize existing unused manacy setback easement and warehouse services access along Fourth Street for twelve new diagonal parking spaces.
Oh, I know, that's a, that should've been taken out.
That was the old.
I'm sorry, that's a misprint. That should've been taken out of the revised, and I, I have it penciled into mine, and, uh, I apologize.
Um, you know, to me, I mean, for rehabbing that building.
Yes, sir.
In that neighborhood, um, I'd love to see it, but, um, you're estimating a million dollars to do this?
Yeah, we're trying to do it under.
Yep, um, they redid the brewery building.
Mm-hmm.
And that was four million dollars without the brewery equipment. I see a lot of similarities with that building, and actually,
Wow.
Uh, this, I think this building needs a, you know, a whole lot more. And, and with today's.
I know.
Material cost, it's, I don't see you getting there with a million dollars.
Well, I've been doing it pretty, been doing it for a long time, I've been able to, uh, do pretty good budgets with the city of Chicago and other places. Uh, beating a lot of the guys' prices out, and still have quality work.
I, I'm not arguing that.
So I'm, that's what I hope to do, if it gets, if you're, we'll know real soon, but probably by the end of March.
So you don't have a, a, a cost of, of goods then for this?
We have, uh, we started it, uh, last year, and I have, I have subcontractors, I've selected, I like to use local subcontractor. And, um, material prices have changed, obviously, and, 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 uh, supply and, and waiting time, I mean, uh, so, we're, I'm gonna redo everything again, and I'll have it all redone, so.
So you'll have a.
Brand new, because we're, we're anxious to go, I wanna start this, I wanna start in a few months.
I can't blame you there.
Yeah.
You know, so, um.
How much do you think you'll be charging for rent?
Pardon me?
How much do you think you'll be charging for rent?
Uh, uh, whatever the market is, I guess, at this point, I, I had, uh, I talked to, was it, was it Theron, is it, uh, Essential?
Yeah.
Uh, cause they may help manage, uh, manage it, uh, he was talking eight hundred for rent. And I, I thought maybe more, but I'm, I'm okay with eight hundred at this point.
That seems low.
Eight to a thousand is about.
For two bedroom?
Yeah.
I, I plan on staying here, I mean, this is a long-term thing for me, I, I plan on living in the, in, in one of the units, and, uh, and the other part will be, um.
So you'll be moving cars?
Pardon me?
Be moving car.
I'll be what?
You'll be moving cars.
You'll be the valet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Your slippers.
And, uh, I think my brother, another unit, cause he's bought a sailboat, and he wants to park it up here, so. He's down in Milford.
Steve, can you explain the, any sort of signage or anything?
I'm sorry?
Any, can you, any sort of signage or anything like that, can you explain?
There might, yeah, we, I know, uh, I, at this point, I don't see any signage other than, I don't anticipate any signage other than an address, but.
Well, didn't you say there was like a coffee shop?
Yeah, it's a coffee shop, there might be something in the window, or something along that, along the, uh, you know, outside the wall. I don't think anything, I don't think there'll be anything sticking out. I, but I was gonna lease that, I, I didn't wanna really have, run the coffee business, let somebody else do it. And I suppose if they wanted to put a sign up, then we'd have to get approval for that, you know, at a later date, for whatever they wanted to do. And, uh, at this point, I don't anticipate anything for the, for the residences. You know, the mail, uh, the mail, the, the mail part will be when you go in the lobby there off of Fourth Street, there'll be a mail, uh, they can drop mail off. And it'll be in, in the wall, there'll be mailboxes, and, uh.
Can you explain any sort of lighting?
The lighting? Uh, there's a street light there, I don't know how much lighting we need, uh, on the building, um, um, I like, I like landscape lighting, uh.
Yeah.
There might be some, uh, landscape lighting, low lighting, uh, you know, uh, possible for the sidewalk there.
Entrance doors?
Yeah, around the entrance.
Are you talking about any lighting on the?
There'll be, there has to be exit lighting, pardon me?
Any kind of lighting on the balconies?
There's no roof over them, um, uh.
There may not be a roof over them, but you've got balconies, I have balconies above them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have, we're working, well, uh, the electrician, we're gonna, we're working on, there's mechanical drawings that we have to get from these guys. That's a good question, the lighting over that, that could be something, uh.
So we would need a lighting plan if that's something you?
A lighting plan, um, a whole electrical, there's gonna be, we have, uh, plumbers, the electrician, uh, HVAC, all has to come up with, I mean, we have to incorporate all those mechanical drawings. That's part of it, once we, um, and these, the prints are gonna get a lot more elaborate, as you know, so.
Steve, can you get into more detail on landscaping? You have that green buffer, what's, what's gonna go on in there?
More on, on, uh, well, on the, on the, on the street itself? Or, okay, on the street, uh, if we have room to put shade trees in, or some nice trees along the, along the green space here, where the, where there's parking, there is no trees right now, I'd like to put some in, and whatever's, whatever's conducive to the neighborhood, uh, I'm open, I used to, I did landscaping in my high school years, and I, I really liked doing, I like the, I like trees. I don't, uh, again, low maintenance, something that's gonna be hardy, and, uh, and there'll be lawn, basically grass.
Are you referring to the south side, or the north side?
Yes, the south side.
Okay, that's in, that's.
On the north side, it'll be pretty much.
That's the right of way, that's not your property, I was.
I know.
I was referring to the north side.
Oh, on the north side? Uh, just low shrub planting and a path. There'll be just low shrub planting and a path, and some, and some, uh, uh, stones or ground cover of some sort to, uh, there'll be a walkway through there, yes.
So we'd need to see a landscaping plan for that.
Okay, no problem.
Have you had any correspondence from neighbors regarding this?
I have not, no.
We have one neighbor here, they're, and they're, I think they're all for it. Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, my goal is to hopefully get approval, I understand there's might be some contingencies that I have to come up with, and that's no problem, but I'd like to get approval so we could move forward, and I can start, uh, really going after this thing.
Good. Any other questions? Bobby having? Yeah, with the history of that being the old main highway through town, through there. I am still concerned that there may be environmental, ground environmental issues, not necessarily from that property itself, but other leaching from surrounding properties may have come into that area. It might not be a bad thing to have it checked to see if something, not necessarily came from that property, but something else leaching into that area that would cause a problem.
I agree.
That's just my main concern, I know that was a heavily, heavily traveled industrial route.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I mean, everything's, okay. I know, there's no dead spots in the lawn, I know, I noticed that, you know, there's.
I've, I've worked around old ancient junkyards, and you cannot tell, unless you know it was a junkyard, you can't really tell just by looking at the vegetation.
It seems like, oh, I mean, when there's oil on the ground, not, nothing grows, you know, or, or any kind of things like that, um, things are, the only, on the north side, on the north side of the building, those trees that are there, that we're gonna try to keep those trees, the, uh, the only reason why there's nothing growing underneath them is because of shade.
Right.
You know, but the rest of it, the lawn is, uh, the lawn is, is great everywhere, in fact, it's trying to grow through all that broken concrete on the, where all the trucks used to park. On the, on the south side there on Fourth Street, you can see the grass coming through, so, um.
It, I mean, it's still, I mean, my house was built around the same time this building was built. I have one place in my yard where I put a flower garden in, and you dig down about ten inches, and you wind up with the brick road that used to be there, so, I mean, there's no telling what's underneath the ground, so.
Wow, don't tell me that, please.
Yeah, I found, I found the old street over there.
Yeah, I know Mark, Mark, uh, Neeson looked at it, he said, you know, sometimes this concrete's twelve inches thick on this floor, and I'm thinking, oh geez. Cause it's pretty uneven on that first floor. We, now that we have it wide open now, you know, I may have to break some of it up in order to get that thing nice and.
The other thing is.
I like things nice and straight, flat, and I don't wanna have it, I don't like doing Band-Aid jobs at all.
Well, the other thing is, when you have a building this old, my, none of my floors are even either, so.
Well, these will be, these will be straight, yeah, I don't, I don't like doing, I won't do a Band-Aid job. It's gonna be a nice building, so.
I think this is a vast improvement for that building and the area, an improvement to start that area, and, uh, but I still would like to have a Brownsville study.
Okay, does anybody you recommend locally?
Well, Steve, you know, part of that too, is Brownsville usually comes with its own funding stream as well, just FYI.
I'm sorry?
The Brownfield usually comes with its own funding stream with tax exemptions.
Huh.
So it's, it's not a all out of pocket kind of.
Okay.
Part of the, the reason why Brownville exists is to be able to, to help people buy properties and clean them up.
I see.
Um, you, you, if, I don't know who the subject matter expert is, you'd have to, I, I mean, somebody in.
Contact Ed Bradford downstairs.
Yep.
Ed Bradford?
He's head of the Brownsville, I'm on that.
Oh, all right, very good.
Eight, Monday, and that, but you might wanna check out him to.
All right, I talked to Ed before, I'll, I'll give him a call.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Steve.
We run, I run the county Brownfield, but this is a city Brownfield, cause they have their own. But Mick's correct, there is what's called non-environmental and environmental incentives that are given out, um, to, uh, help you clean these up. Now, it's, it takes a minute of time to, um, recoup those costs, um, because it's about the taxable value that's reclaimed within that, within that Brownfield plant. Um, but Ed Bradford is the person that you would need to speak with, um, for a city project within the Brownfield.
And just so you know.
You, it may not require.
No, it's, yeah, you guys should be satisfied, and we'll know, it's, it's good, it's rather, better to know for sure, all right.
Have any other questions, man?
No, I, I honestly, I, I think, uh, it, it's, it's, it's needed in that, uh, particular neighborhood to have something like this. Um, I'm, I'm hopeful that, uh, it will come to fruition for you.
I, I plan on it, and, uh, I mean, could, is it possible to get it, uh, so we can move forward, and, and I'll get this, I'll do the Brownsville, a contingent on, on, uh, on the, uh, environmental?
Steve, there's, Steve, there's a lot of meeting left.
Oh.
Pump the brakes.
But in between that would be, you know, again, a lot of, I, my vote would be based on recommendations from the planning.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
The idea of it is really good, and, and we need, we need the, uh, the rooms and everything, um, I would just like to see a lot more detailed plans.
I understand. Big cost, and it's coming.
No, it's a big cost, I've been here before, and I, I know it's a concern for you.
They're on, they're gonna be on, they're on their weekly payroll, all those architects.
But, you know, you know, I would just like to see really more detailed plans.
Yeah, I know, and they're good too, S Squared, we, I, one of the jobs I did with them were in Architectural Digest, so, they're, they're real good architects, so.
Shelley?
No, he's answered everything I was thinking about.
Marlene?
No, I, like I said, I, I'm happy to see something on this piece of property, and, uh, I've been in all that building, I knew Dale Picardi who.
Oh, yeah.
Building, and, uh, and I'm happy to see a good use come to this, if everything is followed through with everything, but I would like the Brownsville.
Okay.
To, um, you'd talk to Ed Bradford and see what can be done.
Yeah.
I, I like the plan, that building has always been an eyesore for as long as I've been around, and frequented that area. Um, having a coffee shop, that's aces in my book.
Yeah, it's gonna be fresh roasted coffee too, if, if we can do it.
And, you know, to help, to help, uh, start to clean up the old trunk line, fantastic, it's great. But I, I, I believe we need to see more detailed plans, you know, you have the environmental, you're not sure on the, on the exterior lighting.
Well, the.
Um, so, to me, uh, will we have to go through public comment in that? I would ask for a table until we see those things, so. Not saying that this project will not go, there's, there's more information we need here, so.
Okay, so I need, uh, lighting, a little more detail on the exterior.
Landscaping.
And, um, oh, landscape, landscape.
Big thing is, uh, environmental.
Yeah, I have it down, yeah.
So, um.
It sounded like there was possibly some movement in the footprint, when you're saying it's gonna go in and out. The footprint of the building, you're saying things are gonna go in and out?
Just, uh, the lines on the, the, uh, uh, it's just on the siding itself, on the, you know, the, the veneer, the exterior.
So color, you're saying?
Pardon me?
Are you just saying the color?
No, no.
Sure.
No, it, uh, there might be some vertical lines, you know, like on the, where the, where the, uh, corners are, and, uh, the post, you know, around the, let's say where the, uh, the, uh.
So you're just describing like architectural pieces that.
Yeah, it's an architectural feature, it's an in and out. It has nothing to do with the foundation or the footprint.
Right, it's decorative.
Yeah.
There's aesthetics.
You'd like, you know, the decks, you know, where they have the balconies there, that might be recessed in.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Then you could put an overhead, then you have an overhead, uh, soffit with the lights, and then.
Um, I, I imagine these are things that you guys are going to wanna see on a site plan, or in some form of a narrative, these things that you're describing. Um, cause I know facade was mentioned as well.
Okay.
Height, the height?
It's.
Oh, the right of way overhang?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, whether or not that there is any issue.
Check to see how that's.
And we'll want, if that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna wanna see that on the site plan, if that's what's gonna happen with the balconies or not.
Oh, okay.
Cause we can't approve it, cause it isn't there right now.
Ah. It's too blank, it's too, just a concept, okay, I see. You need the more detail.
And again, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's needed in that, in that area.
Can we, um, can we, what, can we?
We're not making any decisions right now, I just wanna remind everyone.
No. I mean, balconies are, are not a requirement, but it is something I think that is certainly worth going forward with, if, if that is part of your plan.
Yeah.
Right now, it's on, it's only in the drawings, but it isn't in, in any of the, the narrative.
The balconies?
Yes.
Oh. Well, they were, yeah, they were, I have planned on having it, I, I'm sorry if it wasn't included, I apologize.
Also just.
I wanted to have outdoor space for every unit, yeah.
That's understandable, we just need to check also to make sure it doesn't violate anything that's already in an ordinance someplace of the overhang onto the right of way. There might be something that we're not aware of at this time, something to check on. It must be something that may have to require our variance, we don't, until we.
I thought, I thought, I, I thought we looked into this once before, and it was because of the height, it was eighteen feet, it were fine. So high above, you know, that's fine.
We'll look into it. If it's on the site plan, we'll look into it.
Okay.
How far is the, the existing building off the sidewalk right now?
Yeah, maybe, maybe a, maybe a foot.
Couple of foot.
Yeah, maybe two feet.
Half.
Okay.
Couple of feet.
That's all gonna be redone.
Pictures are deceiving.
Yeah, maybe their sidewalk.
Maybe a yard.
Either the sidewalk is not continuous.
I've only walked by that a million times.
It's pretty bad shape.
I've driven by it a couple of times, eh?
There's a part there, there's a section of it that's not even there, the sidewalk, so, so.
All right, you have any, any other thing to add?
No, I.
We go to public comments.
Um, well, I, I guess the only thing, I would wonder, wonder if we could get a, kind of a list, if we have to meet again, uh, what I should have done.
Steve, when, when a decision's made, we'll, we'll get all that stuff to you.
That'll be a later.
Oh, you will?
Later part of it.
Yeah, this is still the public hearing, so we still, there's no decisions being made right now.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, I guess I don't know what else to add, uh, if there's anything else I could do to help, let me know.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, we will now open for, uh, public comment, uh, if there's anyone that would like to speak or against this project, please approach podium. Name and address, please. Anyone?
Did you, were you here just to speak for him?
I was just here, you know, somebody said, what about that piece of crap across the road?
We already talked about that.
That was, that's water under the bridge.
Fine. Okay, we will close the public comment and move along to staff.
Can you give us a time there?
Sure. Time? Oh, I'm sorry. Fifty. Fifty. Comment, staff?
Oh, for me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that, I thought you were waiting for something else.
Come on, Zach.
That's short timer.
Uh huh.
Um, yeah, that's, that's warranted, I guess, give me just a second, guys, I'm sorry. Um, that's the wrong one. Do you have it right there?
Yes.
That's the ne, that's the next one. Do I have, do I not have it on this one?
Yes, I'm not sure where you're looking for it.
I was looking for the site plan review notes. Did they not make it into this? We're having printer issues and making this packet was very difficult.
Okay.
I guess I don't have the site plan review notes in here, um, I'd be happy to share those with you. I don't know how those got missed, like I said, the, the new machine I got was leading to some printer issues, so, sorry about that.
Anything other to add?
Anything else, um, I'll save the other stuff, um, so we're ready to make some decisions.
Alright, okay. Seven fifty-two and we will close the public hearing on three fourteen Seventh Street. Move along to comment on agenda-related items, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on the agenda, uh, please come to the podium. Name and address, please, and you have up to three minutes. Anyone? Okay. Moving along, we will go to new business, three fourteen Seventh Street.
So for this one, it sounded like you guys had a, a lot of questions you wanted answered, I'm not gonna pretend to know which you're, which way you're leaning. If you move for approval, I recommend we do the stipulations one at a time and then to pass a master one at the end, I think that's important. Um, and if, I guess if you're to choose to table, I think that would be wise to kind of help guide Steve on, on what you guys are really looking for as well.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and if you, if you want, if that's the way you guys go, um, I have some suggestions as well, but I'll let you guys work it out.
Move to discussion.
I'd like to make a motion that we make one of stipulations a Brownfield study.
But before, before we get into that, um, this is a stipulation for what? Is this a stipulation for approval or for, or for a table or? I just, I just want to be clear for, for Nancy in the minutes.
I'd like to see a table until the things that we suggested that are kind of invasive right now are, are brought up and on the plan. Because it's missing a lot of things on the plans.
I have a question about the procedure of tabling. Um, because I, I think it's only happened once since I've been on the commission. Um, it's already March, I know, I know that it's taken some time to put some of these things together, but um, what is the difference from a procedural standpoint if we move to approve with stipulations and, and create a list? Or if we tabled, does that mean it gets pushed out till the next meeting, a full another month, and we're into construction season and the rest of it?
It could get pushed to the next meeting, there could be a special meeting as well. He could request one, and if you guys chose to, to meet a special meeting, we could do that.
Okay. I'm just curious if there's enough information um, that would, that would meet both what the commission wants to see, what the city's requiring.
Yes, there is things where we can approve some pending and then meeting all the stipulations that we have.
That was my impression, okay.
If, if there's some, if there's more that you guys need to see that's gonna affect your decision, I think that's when it would be wise to table.
Yep.
Pam?
Yeah, I, I really don't have enough information as, as to what's, the things that I'm concerned with to, to make a decision on this tonight. I would like to table it until some of those, I, I need more detailed drawings, I, I'd like to see the Brownfield like everybody else is. Yeah, I, I guess I'm in favor of maybe table it until some of those are, are done. I'm just not comfortable with okaying it right now with stipulations, there's, I don't have enough information.
It's leaning in the right direction, we just-
He is, it's, he's, he's very, very close, there's only a few more things that I, I'd like to see more detailed. It's, it's-
Just some baby steps away.
Yep. I, I, I'm not trying to be picky with him, but we feel, we've held other people to a higher standard and I'd like to keep everything on a level playing field. I'm, I'm, I don't, I don't want to pick and choose who will make do what, I want to be equal with everybody.
Nick?
Well, to me is the, I, I'd like to see the site plan review, and, and I assume that there has been one?
Yeah, there has been one, I had it together, like I said, I, we had to print this out and create it rather than me stitching it together online, so I don't know what-
You happen to have it on your computer at all with you, Derek?
I have it on my computer in the office, I don't have it here, so.
If you had, there, you could probably put it on the screen.
I can, I can tell you there was, there was nothing outstanding on it that wasn't, you know, the typical, the Knox boxes from the fire department, things like that. There was nothing that was out of the ordinary for, for anything else that I-
Is it in the zoning thing?
Mm-mm.
No, she's asking.
No?
No, like, get- Oh, I don't think so. I don't think you can access those from here. She's gonna, she's gonna try, she doesn't trust me.
Challenge.
Don't put it past her.
You know, I, I hate to see the project delayed, uh, if we can, if we can move it to the next step without, without being at risk of approving a project that has some other issues that we're not aware of. Uh, like, I do think, just like we did for the hotel, we made a, a long list, if we made it come back every time, uh, we would still be in the planning process, so.
But we did table that.
We did, we did the first, yeah, came back with their list.
Table. Look at that.
Yep.
And, and that's what I said, I just, I want to hold everybody accountable to the same standard. I, I don't want to approve something where I don't know what this building's gonna look like when it's done.
Now, also, just a question, but um, it doesn't, it's not going to require another public hearing, correct?
If it were tabled, you're saying?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. We can, we could have a special meeting.
Bob?
Special meeting would be fine, we could, yeah.
So-
If he can show us what we want to see, yeah.
A special meeting if it, if the information can be compiled quicker than the next scheduled meeting.
Yes.
Do you have a list of the things we-
I, I was just gonna suggest, why don't I, I throw out some stuff and you guys tell me if that's something you'd like Steve to present the next time? Right.
You mean on Monday?
Brownfield meets on Monday, yeah.
Table.
Right. Yeah, that would, that would be, you're, you're not gonna, you're not gonna see that in the next few days, great, yeah. We'll get, we'll get to there, Mike, we'll get to there.
We need Ryder right there.
Um, so I'll just kind of run through kind of what I, Katie and I had notes on and, and you guys just, if you don't want that, or if it's, you want more detail, just let us know, okay? So, um, one of the ones we said was uh, final site plan approval from the, by the planning department, I don't know if that's, that's just a, a standard one, but that's the first one I had on the list. Um, finalized um, site plan showing uh, the, the balconies, if there was anything changing there as far as things were going in and out. I know you said that ended up being um, facade stuff, but just, that's gonna be a finalized thing. Uh, as I keep going on the list, landscape plan, um, you guys want to see more details on that lighting plan?
Yes.
Okay, so let's keep going here.
And again, on the lighting plan, it, will there be, or is there requirements for lighting on a balcony? In other words, uh, do we have requirements if you have a balcony that it has some kind of an exterior light? And if so, make sure that it's shielded so it, it's only, it only illuminates on the balcony.
So, we don't have anything in the zoning ordinance, that would be in the, in the building code.
Okay, and I think that's, that may be, because I, we, we had another building that had balconies and they did have to have lights, I thought, uh, outside each balcony entrance, but I'm- Yeah, there's a difference between the hotels, I don't know if it's a requirement, but-
Well, I'm just, you know, some of the, like I said, some of the balconies have a balcony above it, it would be very dark.
At some point, in some places have balconies, they have no lighting, it's up to the owner, the apartment, the unit owner like what they want to light on.
I, can I say something?
Nope, not yet, yeah. You want me to keep, yes, okay. Um, balconies, uh, materials and colors?
Materials.
Facade things related, okay.
Garage doors as well, what they're gonna be like, since there's so many of them on that one side.
As far as what the garage doors are gonna look like?
That's where the drawing shows it.
I know, that's what the drawing says, but the drawing says something else for the outside too, so I'd like to-
Is a finalized rendering, is that something you guys want to see or?
I would like to see a finalized rendering.
Yeah.
Um, what else do you have, Katie?
I was just thinking that, solidifying that, but that's not really the deal at this point.
That's, yeah. And so as far as the, the Brownfield stuff, if there's a, if you guys are requesting a phase two, that takes a lot of time. Um, if you're, I mean, phase one could even be- Right. Right. So that could be one where it, it might be, it, it's not gonna be happening by the next meeting, I would tell you that.
Right.
Um, that would be something if it, you would want to see that, you, make sure everything's good to go before approval, a stipulation like that, but I think having that presented before the next meeting is, is not gonna be feasible.
So what you're kind of saying is on, on the Brownfield stuff, we could have requested, but then when it comes to approval, we go for the approval time, the approval would go where we would-
That's when we'd have the amendment.
Amendment.
If you wanted to see underway, or see some action towards it before the next one, that could be, that Katie came up with that.
And even if we could just get a, somebody more knowledgeable uh, to do a assessment, not necessarily a full study, just to get an assessment, just to see if, if somebody that has, you know, a, a working knowledge of environmental issues takes a walk-through and says, it doesn't look like there's anything that's-
Yeah, it might be just somebody have to come through, take a soil work, that might be all it takes.
So I would suggest that would be the only hard right now, and then, and then go from there.
Yeah.
Because again, if, if I was working on my house, I wouldn't necessarily have a Brownfield in my house.
No, well, that's what I was thinking too. And I think it would probably, long-term, benefit him as the owner to take advantage of some of that, that Brownfield, but I don't know that-
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I'm not comfortable requiring it.
I, I would just say, you know, get a, a, somebody to, to make a, an assessment of, of the property that has a background to me.
So that's, it seemed like you guys are leaning towards the, just an initial assessment, just for time's sake.
Yes.
Zach? Um, can we ask for financials or a updated um, bid or quote on, on the price of the pro-
No, I don't think so.
Pro, I think uh, pro forma, I think is something that could be requested, I think it's in there.
I mean, this, this is a big, big project, and I, I honestly, I, I think it's gonna exceed two million dollars, but.
Well, we never got a pro forma, I mean, the, the-
We never asked.
Did we, okay. So.
So you, I am not aware of you guys having done it before, I don't, Mike hasn't, isn't either?
We haven't.
Um, it's something you can, um, there are, there are um, financial, I don't want to say financial documents because that doesn't sound right, but uh, economic questions you could ask, it'll be a little more general.
Like proof of secured financing, that kind of thing. I don't know that that's on us, yeah, I don't think that's on us.
This is, we're going for a P O D on this, correct?
Right.
I, I would recommend kind of leaning away from that.
Mm-hmm.
That would be my recommendation.
Well, because what is the, say, project gets underway and for whatever reason, for financial reasons, whatever, it, the project doesn't get completed, what then happens?
We built in a twenty-four month or twenty-six month termination.
Okay, so there's a remedy for that, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as you guys put it there.
Okay.
You know, it's satisfactory progress.
That's another one.
So are, are we uh, okay with recommendations? Was there any other ones that Zach had listed?
Those are the ones I touched on for now, I think any of the other ones would be more appropriate after what you guys requested.
Everybody happy with this?
I am.
Steve, you wanted to say something, you can approach the podium, please.
Just on the balconies, on the-
Please, please approach the podium.
I'm sorry, about the protocol, I, it's been a while since I've done this, other than, uh, the, the balconies, uh, I figured that the entrance, when you come out of the balcony, it'd be recessed, you know, be recessed into the building a little bit, so maybe a two-foot wall. Typically, we have a soffit there with a couple over, with a recessed lighting inside, cans or something, and that's, they're, that's the best way to, to solve that, and enough lighting. And um, that's, when I, we were doing, when I was working with the architects, we did sketches, it's not on the prints, it's not on the plans, and it's recessed, but that's how we were gonna do it. In the detailed drawings, that's how it would come out, so, you know, so. Then it, then it leaves the windows, a little place for if they want to put planners or something like that, you know, it breaks up that little, that space. That's one of the lines, the architectural line, that might be recessed, you see what I'm saying, where it goes in a little cavity and-
Yeah, because you said there's no other overhang, right?
No, well, there'll, there'll be over each one, you know, they're, they're identical, top and bottom, so that, that brings that line in, you see?
Yeah, those are the kind of things I'd like to see on the-
I understand, I understand, I understand. Well, that's, I just wanted, I just trying to get this, uh, to get, to get to the point where we can go and I, the lenders need to have all this approval and everything else. And, and the contingencies, I have no problem with, we'll meet them. I've, I have, any other thing is I've never started a job and not completed it in forty-eight years, so, it's gonna be completed, come, you know, no matter what, so.
Okay.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So the feelings of the commission are to table it um, till we get uh, more plans, more detailed plans, so.
More information.
More information, yes.
Okay.
So with that, uh, we have to take a roll?
I got, I'll make a motion that we're tabling it to get that information.
Second?
I'll second.
Pam, any more discussion? Lana, please take a roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Semianski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Remberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Uh, next, Iron Works Extension, Mr. Ken Armour.
Generaler, two fifty-four River Street, we are looking for an extension.
Due to the, I guess, the current delays and the things that were unforeseen, but we, we took a walk through. Bob, Zach, and George.
Katie.
To see that what we feel is substantial progress, he has, we took some photos and really interesting, unforeseen, being a history lover, some of the, we did core samples when we started, and the concrete was six to eight inches, and we took a half a dozen of them, when the engineers got into it, we started doing a little deeper. There was several spots in there where the foundation and footing is 48 inches. So, I mean, that's stuff you see in Chicago where they hide bodies, but they, it was, it was unbelievable. But I walked, I took Jeff Singh there till we walked through, and apparently they had.
A bunker.
They had a monster's machines.
That's what he was.
Huge boring mills on several locations in there that I figured would really, had to have that kind of foundation to them.
Yeah, so it was incredible, but, yeah, it's, it's underway, obviously the funding, they have the money, I'm just.
Then you ran into that frost problems.
What's that?
You ran into freezing problems, didn't you?
Yeah, there was an issue with ground frost underneath the concrete when they were doing that, so when we went out there, they had, had to hire a bunch of heating blankets and running water through there, and just normal stuff that you don't foresee, but adds to the budget. But it's finally over the hurdle, and they're good now. Also attached, I think Zach has it, or Mike, I had him email, there's a updated construction schedule that they believe is quite conservative, so it's shooting for full completion in October of this year.
Of this year?
This year, okay.
So they're October 1st to November here, see.
Is it November?
He said, final certificate November 1st.
Okay, yeah, end of October, first November.
So the reason for tearing the floors up is for, I didn't get a chance to go through, so.
Oh, okay, there was so much drainage systems they have in these, that it was cheaper and more efficient for them to tear the entire floor out, put all the drainage in, and then repour it than it was to saw cut the existing floors, which I've never seen that before, because that was a, quite a cost absorbed.
So you're not putting heated floors in, are you?
No, no. But you had the, like I was telling Zach, you guys have the construction schedule? It's, it's wide open, anytime you want to drive by there, you can see every other week or monthly updates, and you can see the trades are actually listed, and it was quite nerve wracking for me, being the building owner for the first 14 months working with them, but.
How thick are the new floors?
What's that?
How thick will the new floors be?
The new floor is around eight, I think it's about eight inches, six to eight.
Not 40.
Yeah, there's nothing really heavy, it's two stories, so there's some footings in certain areas to, for the engineer had stated, but nothing like what was in there that.
I see they came and took the concrete away finally, huh?
What's that?
I see they finally took the concrete out, took away.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're. They're, yeah, they're really moving now, yeah.
They're sure by now.
Went for recycling.
Yeah, they were piling it all outside, and finally got rid of all that.
Is, are these pictures the northeast sections of the building?
Those would be the north.
That's in the metal frame?
Yes, 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 it's the flat roof side, I think, I think you guys referred to it as the new section.
Yeah.
Was there, there was, did they find a lot of clay in there, like we were walking in?
Yeah, yeah, I was surprised too, there wasn't as, but I think that whole peninsula.
There's still clay in my truck from that. There's still clay all up in my truck from, from that site visit.
Our feet were covered.
Yeah, I'm surprised more hasn't been uncovered, I mean, it looks like that peninsula was just created.
I live on the peninsula, I've been watching, I've been watching, I live on the peninsula, I've been watching you.
It's a nightmare, but the hard stuff's over, and, yeah, it's finally, they move forward.
No, as I understand it, they're, they're actually creating multiple pods, correct?
Inside, yeah, yeah.
So this is just a shell, and then you're gonna have all these pods, and that's why they need all the drainage, because they're individual.
Correct.
Units.
Little grow rooms, yeah, and I think you have the, the actual construction plans too, I'm not.
And Ken, you just got a new tenant in there, correct?
Yeah, we got it. We've been working pretty hard, he's a really good kid. At the front, the front corner there where the cafe is, yeah, it's a really cool kid, he's a local kid, really popular, he's a brewer. So he's putting up a small, he used to be the lead guy at North.
Oh, really?
Really popular kid, lives in, just down, what do you call that, town, some town.
Lives in, on Fifth Street, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, really good kid.
And you, and you don't have to go into it, but there, there's a few others in the works, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're putting, there's a local young lady who is a, I don't want to disclose her plan, but she's a local, her dream is to do a sandwich shop and.
A business.
I remember you telling.
A business, sorry, yeah. So we're trying to accommodate her, because her budget is extremely small, but I think it's a good addition to help the brewer and that whole area, and we can slowly start working down the bays.
Do you still plan to go up on that second floor there with the brewer a little bit?
I'd like to, we're talking about, like we talked, second floor, for the brewery to have a two floor. We're trying to, we're, run through those numbers, now, once the construction starts here, we're talking to the trades that are existing, they're the big ones, and they're offering some pretty deep discount, help some of the small, local businesses, we're trying to put in there, because there already, all their resources are already deployed, so it should, should work out well.
I pre, I, I like this, the construction schedule, one thing I don't see on here, actually, a couple of things, is the security fence and the parking? When is that?
No, I think that was on the site plan.
I think it was on the site plan.
So if we're, if we're trying to hit these, these dates, you know, where, where does that fall into?
The security fence?
Yeah, security fence and parking.
Because this looks completely just like the building itself, but nothing on the perimeter.
I'm thinking that they would be, come towards the end of it, all the electronics and the, and the equipment. Because right now, we have the semis going around back, so I'm thinking the final security plan would be at the end of probably the last couple 60 days, I'm assuming. That would be.
All of that is contingent on their license.
Is that where?
They can't get their license until that final inspection.
Yeah.
That's the M E P inspection.
Exactly.
Is that the M E P inspection?
Yeah, the state, before they can do anything, the state comes in and they're really.
That's the M E P inspection.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
And that's in October.
Michael was just saying, yeah.
And Ken, would it be fair to say that the outside stuff could be done simultaneously with a lot of this inside stuff?
Yeah, they, I know they just finished their budgeting on the exterior, all the exterior, replacing the metal and cleaning that all up. So as soon as the weather warms, that's, should be on the construction, construction schedule that you have. Yeah, now the weather's warmed, and you can see the, the demo's complete, they should really start seeing. And like I said, I'd drive by there every couple of weeks if I, you know, if you're out and about. Hopefully, in the next 60 days, you can stop by the kid's place and support a good local guy in his business and have a beer.
Well, that's planned.
But you remember, we went to the, the, I convinced that company to, which is really cool, there's none like this in the state. They actually have installed glass windows in the grow room, so it's kinda gonna be a experience where you can actually tour and look at all the different phases, the processing, so, I was really surprised they, I didn't think they would, but I pushed and they, they obliged us, so it really should be a cool experience with the brewery, and be able to walk through and see exactly how these facilities, and it's all behind glass, so you don't have to worry about wearing the gloves and mask, and it should be a really, really cool experience for people. And the last thing, part of the, the S U P was the Riverwalk extension. I'm working with George right now on that, because I had no idea that the city has no, there's no formal guidelines to the Riverwalk, so George is going back and forth, there's nothing, I mean, I said, well, what about, who pays for the lighting? What about lighting? He said, we don't have anything, Ken, I said, what's the distance to the water? We don't have anything. What's the distance to the Riverwalk? He said, we have nothing, I said, well, who's liable if it's, it's hurt? He said, I don't know, I mean, nothing, so we're going back and forth to try and create some kind of verbiage to protect the city and the owner, because what I'm worried about is, that's the far north of the Riverwalk, so the riffraff is gonna go where no people walking, there's no lighting, there's no nothing, so there's something, I mean, I don't know if it's you or the council, but something to try and, because there's, I asked them about, can people, I was living in a different country, and they had issues where bonfires, and according to your ordinance now, they can do any of that, I mean, you could set up on the Riverwalk and stay there overnight if you want, so.
Actually, in our ordinance, you can't.
No? You might want to let George know.
Part about, yeah, and, and again, I think the, the part that, on that issue is easement. Then it'll be up to the city to develop the actual Riverwalk portion.
Correct.
And all the lighting and all of that, so it's really an easement issue, I think right now, is being able to, be able to extend across that.
Who's liable is some of the issues, I mean, if it's hurt, or somebody.
Once, if, if you grant an easement to the city, then the city at that point becomes liable for that easement portion, just like, you know, about, similar to a cycle.
Yeah, it was just talking to him, because what if it's me, what if something happens to me on there, if it's my property? But it's on the East City easement, who's liable? You as the city, or me as the property owner? There's just a bunch of verbiage that he. That he, he was.
Well, the court's working on.
But anyway, I guess what I was just trying to say, we are working through, through that too, it's not something that, that, you know, install the Riverwalk file, but we acknowledge it, and we're, we're trying to get through the, the legal issues, so we can, because there will be cannabis there, there'll be heavy security, and obviously, they don't want, nobody wants any riffraff or going on up there, and, but I think, yeah, if you've got any other questions, like I said, it's as transparent as you can get, you're welcome to, right now, you can drive your car right in the building, so feel free to.
Big tires.
Did you ever work out anything with the worm lady?
We went and met her a couple of times, she's really, really cool, I, I love her passion and everything, but we couldn't, because what I was, I could take up all day, I get excited about that. You know, the cannabis, there's, in these big facilities, as I'm learning, there's like four or five, 40 yard dumpsters of the plant matter that, that gets thrown out, so that was kind of exciting when I was talking to her, I thought, hey, bring it to it, but as I learned from her and met with her a couple of times, the worm matters, the worms are really only for like food waste, wet cardboard, things that are easily compostable, but, yeah. But I think there's some cool synergies to, to figure out, I hope she's doing well, I haven't heard from her in a while, but she had.
I thought at one time you were looking at giving her a space in the, in.
Well, that started, she was opening someplace else.
Yeah, we were, she wanted to go tomorrow, and I was still fumbling around with these guys, so, and there was no heat, and she needed, yeah. But I loved her plan, I loved her passion, I, I think she'll do well.
Any other questions? Marlene? Thank you.
Thanks.
So we're here, make a motion on extension?
I'll make the motion to extend.
I'll second.
I would recommend an extension with a timeline on it, my recommendation would be, would be giving, giving an extra year, one year.
One year, from today.
You want to amend that motion?
That we extend it for one year as of today, so, from, to the 2nd of March, 2023. 3rd of March, well, no, would, if we start on the 3rd, then wouldn't it be the 2nd, to be one year? Anyways, yeah, the 3rd.
One year.
One year, okay.
Because there's nothing to say, some, some of these things may back up a little bit on the construction, due to us, just things.
Motion by Mick to, for an extension, for one year to 3. 3/23 or 3/23?
In this, when I do it in the system, it's gonna say 3/3, 22, or 23.
All right, and the second was from, was there a second?
I second it.
Bob, any discussion? Please take a roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Simeonski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Humberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Motion approved, congratulations. Full business?
I have none.
None, okay, public comments, communication, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to, uh, say anything? Please come to the podium, name and address, please, you have three minutes. None, all right, thank you. Staff reports? I think this is for Conos.
I didn't want to forget to tell you guys about it, so I made sure to write it down on there. I told Nancy I was gonna forget five times, and she said, well, put it on there, and I said, okay, good idea, Nancy. So, for Conos has made it through the H D C, I don't know, I don't think I told you guys about that the last time, I don't think it had happened yet. So they've got H D C approval over there for facade, and they're kinda revamping the, I guess it's the eastern portion there. Yeah, so there's a few stipulations there, they're working on a land use permit for that addition to, um, it's, it's a, overall, it's a relatively minor thing there, just dumpster corral more or less, but it's gonna be fully enclosed. Kinda go with the theme of the, of the downtown there, and he'll, he's gonna need a soil erosion permit as well. So those are the two things he's, we're kinda waiting on in that, but he can be working on the facade and things like that, so there's movement there, there is movement. He had a Facebook video last night, if you guys wanted to check it out.
Pretty good internal update, looks like they're, you know, moving things on the inside for sure.
We're the whole building, basement and first floor, main floor.
I know the dumpster he had outside was about third full of PVC pipe as of last Friday, so.
Yeah, I think they pretty much got it and started new.
Video showed last night, a lot of new plating in there, there's a real lot of it.
Uh, does, has, is there a date yet for, his opening?
I'm not aware of one, there could be, I'm just not been privy to that.
The last I heard, it was still trying to end of April, or the, the, before the, before the beginning of summer anyway, is his goal, he wants to be open before summer.
I'm thinking so. That's aggressive, that's an aggressive.
I think he, well, I think he's gonna push, because that's big money.
It is.
You're gonna have to work 24/7 to make that.
Okay. Anything else, Zach?
I'm looking at Nancy. I guess the other one is that, this, looks like this is gonna be my last planning commission meeting here, I've accepted a job at the city of Petoskey, and I'll be moving up there shortly, so it's been a pleasure working with you guys, it's, it's been great, I think we've all learned a lot. I think there's a lot of passion in this room, and I love passion, so I lo, I love it here, I do, it's, it's sad to go, but, you know, couldn't pass up an opportunity like that, so, thank you, you guys, you've all been very supportive, and I'll. and I'll always appreciate that.
I think we have a 30-day return policy.
Can I have a motion to not accept?
Yeah. I'll make that motion.
I'm not used to his wife working at the credit union, and it's not taking her away from there.
Well, she'll be around for a little while, so.
If you're at the credit union, you're going to work up there.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And live in his car for a while.
We are going to miss you.
He'll definitely miss you.
Thank you. You guys don't have to do that. There's mine.
Because I know what they're like.
Just the staff. Just the staff.
I know somebody up there, too. They're calling us.
Well, again, you will be missed, we've enjoyed you, and I'm speaking for the group, we've enjoyed you, even Roger.
Well, I, I think Roger did, he was at my bachelor party, so.
And he did.
So thanks again, you guys, I really appreciate it, it's been great here.
Thank you. Thank you for everything.
I promise I'll be hooking every week for you when you keep.
Talking at my heartstrings now, Marlene, come on.
Katie?
Um, yeah, so it looks like I will more than likely be taking on kind of Zach's role for you guys, so you'll be seeing more of me around, and I hope to make it, you know, a smooth transition and continue to do great things with you guys, so I'm excited to see how that goes.
Welcome to the fray.
Yes.
Yes.
Nancy?
I have nothing.
Okay.
Don't have a special meeting. What? Next week, the week after, the week after?
Vacation time.
Because I won't be here, yes. I'm going on vacation.
All right, well, we will move to members.
That's my slide.
Clean?
Nothing.
Nothing? Shelley?
I have nothing.
Bob?
Wish you luck, Zach, been, just getting good working with you, pretty good. Now we got to break Katie into the mold and.
Hopefully, I can help the girl out.
She knows the stuff I've helped you with at times, so, or you'd at least know what I've helped you on, you could probably pass that on to her. Going to miss you, going to miss you and your wife at the credit union, she hadn't been there very long, but she looked happy there.
She's very happy, thank you.
Fain, in your opinion?
Uh, short term, it looks like that's going to be our option for a little while.
Nick? Best of luck to you, Zach.
Thanks, man.
Yeah, best of luck, we'll miss you.
Thanks, man.
Ken, miss you, Petoskey's getting a great guy.
Yes.
We really are, so. Glad to come see you.
Yes.
I'm sure there's a brewery up there.
Field trip. We'll take a planning commission.
You know, I'm wondering if he has a gambling problem.